3.07 Consolidated Application Approval for Iowa's and Superintendent Kinder.
Yeah, just a brief comment on that. Typically, that is available at this time of the year, but that has not been released yet by the Illinois State Board of Education. So we will pull that item for today, and we will be bringing that back in one of the upcoming meetings in February or March, most likely.
Thank you. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda without 3.07?
So moved.
Roll second.
Uh, roll call.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move to action items 4.01 Vision 2030 Resolution. Superintendent Kinder, you want to take it from here?
Absolutely. Mr. Sousa's gonna queue up the slides for this. And essentially, what I'll do is just give you a brief overview of Vision 2030, kind of what it is and what is the collective importance of this initiative. And then from there, there is a resolution that is asking school boards to state their support of this framework for moving forward into what does the future of education look like in Illinois. So this slide, Jack, is up. Okay. So Vision 2030 is an advocacy framework. It essentially is a blueprint that outlines the vision and priorities as a collective effort for advocacy efforts as it relates to policy, funding, and many other aspects in public education in the state of Illinois. I'm just gonna give you a brief overview in terms of the background and the three areas of future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding. So several organizations last fall came together, including the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Illinois Association of School Administrators, Illinois Principals Association, and you can see by those logos represented, there was a great deal of representation on this initiative. A statewide initiative was launched to get input from multiple stakeholders, and more than 1,000 individuals were involved in this effort. And if you have familiarity with Vision 2020, there was, this same exercise was done about five years ago, related to Vision 20, 2020. And now it is essentially the time to revisit that and look forward going forward. Erin, if you go back one slide, there's just a quick video, it's not long, that gives a brief overview. Okay, so as I mentioned, this is kind of what's next for public education in the state of Illinois, and how can we have a unified voice and framework as it relates to predictable funding, mandates, and working with our legislators. Vision 2020, a big thing that was accomplished with Vision 2020 and speaking the same language was evidence-based funding. And that essentially is stabilizing state funding, and it is looking and taking into consideration local need. So now with the call to Vision 2030, we're saying we need to continue this effort. We made some advances and some progress in relation to highly effective educators, 21st century learning, and also accountability systems. But there's a lot of work yet to be done. So what this framework is, and there's a great, more level of detail, go up one more slide, Erin, is this kind of grassroots effort to go and advocate statewide with this collective voice. And in the 2020, we had more than 90% of school boards across the state who voiced their support through a board resolution. And then through that collective voice, that has empowered all of our organizations, from the Illinois Association of School Boards through all of the others, to work collectively with our elected officials and those who represent us at the state level. Future-focused learning is that first component. Did I lose them? Alright, so future-focused learning is essentially just continuing that drive to say, we don't even know what jobs yet are going to fully exist or be highest in demand, but that we have to continue having a vision that evolves with the needs. Student safety and well-being needs to continue to be at the forefront, and we have to continue to support a high-quality and diverse educator pipeline. And then number four, I feel to be very important, related to curriculum and instructional flexibility, meeting the needs of local communities. There are, the main ideals that are included under the future-focused learning umbrella are, again, resources for not just physical safety of buildings, but ensuring that safety and connection, and also considering mandates. We know that the 104th General Assembly just recently initiated, and we also know that we're being faced with just oftentimes a laundry list of legislation and mandates that needs to be considered. And we need a collective voice in the advocacy related to those efforts that helps us to navigate all of the mandates, but not just navigate them, also decrease them, and take into consideration the burden that that places on local school districts, and keep in mind that we need to have a voice in the implementation of those mandates in terms of the how or what or the resources related to that. Emerging career fields, obviously, this is a continued effort, but we're looking at the collective whole of that whole experience of the students when they're inside of the K-12 school system, and having those opportunities to be college, career, life-ready. Excellent educators, that teacher retention and development is something that continues to be a high, high emphasis. So the policy implications are outlined for you on the next slide. Future-driven skills that attract and retain the high-quality educators, safety and well-being, and then that curricular and instructional flexibility. The next aspect is that shared accountability. The state has been working, and there is a lot of individuals involved in improving our accountability systems statewide. We have to be held accountable to the impact that we're having on our students in terms of their learning, growth, and development. But we also need systems that are gonna truly accurately report and be in a timely measure. And then we also need to have a holistic view of student success. Student success is not just measured based on one test score, one state assessment. So how do we best, how do we best measure and communicate that? Again, mandates come up. When we're looking at shared accountability, the emphasis here is ensuring that the implementation procedures promote flexibility in local decision-making. So advancing forward in the slides, you'll see that the ideals are outlined. Growth and proficiency as a perspective is something that this whole voice of individuals who developed Vision 2030 said, this is, this is critical. We need to acknowledge both of those aspects of growth and proficiency, and we need to look at that over time, taking into consideration our state assessment system, and then how that actually aids us at the local level in making decisions all the way to the classroom where teachers are working directly with our students. And then school ratings. It is important how we are portrayed to the community, and we want those to truly reflect our growth and progress and that positive impact that we are making for our learners in our communities. Again, the policy implications, then, that flow forth from these ideals are reforming the Illinois State Assessment System and reforming our current accountability system as well as the mandate process. All of those things have an impact on how we are able to do business and the flexibility and autonomy that we have here in a local level. And so these are critical conversations that we need to continue to have, and we need to be empowered to advocate and collectively communicate to all of those who are making oftentimes well-informed decisions or well-intended decisions, but not yet realizing or fully realizing the impact that that could have at the local level. And then finally is predictable funding. The, the big picture here with predictable funding is to protect evidence-based funding. We know that the state of Illinois is facing a significant budget shortfall. It's projected to be over $3 billion of a deficit in the state funding. And so what we, at the local level, need to ensure that we do is continue to advocate that we are maintaining that stable funding base through evidence-based funding because we've made significant advancements with that. We need to ensure that we are getting that full payment and maintaining for our mandated categoricals, and that's the state, that's additional monies that we're receiving from the state for things like transportation. Pension reform continues to be a big conversation throughout the state of Illinois, and this doesn't just affect educators and those in public education, but those who work in public service as a whole. That is a critical conversation that we need to be a part of as public school districts because that could have significant impacts to us as a school district and in terms of our resources. Statewide funding sources for capital and safety needs needs to continue to be a priority, and then also considering the local school district's needs when it comes to, to funding, school funding. So I kind of, I got a little bit ahead of myself, but on the slides, you'll see just a little bit more in-depth explanation regarding funding EBF pension reform for those Tier 2 employees. That is having a significant impact on the state budget and definitely future impacts for us all. Rethinking levy structure, that is how we set a levy, and we, we know that the state funding model in Illinois is so heavily dependent upon our local resources, our local tax base. And yet, we also know that school districts have urgent needs to maintain life safety and safety as a whole. So again, that will have policy implications with every piece of proposed legislation that comes forward or that advances. And so we need to have a collective voice in advocating and considering the impact on the local level. Can go ahead and advance. So what it all boils down to, if you click to the next slide for me, Erin, what it all boils down to is all of these organizations that collectively represent us from the local level, from our, our school boards to those who work in education, and it is saying, hey, this is the big picture. We have to keep these, this conversation at the forefront in what is best for our students and what needs to be top of mind when we consider all decisions that impact education at the local level and ultimately impact our students. And so to the call to action, what I had previously shared this information with the Board of Education to review, it was discussed at length in many of the sessions at the Illinois Association of School Board Conference at the, the joint conference that was held this past November. And what we're here tonight to do is essentially ask the board for your support for Vision 2030 so that collectively as a state, we can use this as a communication piece to continue forward in these really important conversations and, and an advocacy lens and advocating for what is going to ultimately be best for us here on the local level, impacting us here in Menaca 201, but also public education, K-12 in totality. So I'm happy to discuss any points or, you know, to the extent I can. This is a broad, general framework. This is not specific to any one individual piece of proposed or current legislation, but we know that the, that continues to be something that the list just stacks up in terms of those often well-intended things that have significant impacts on the, the local level.
Thank you. Are there questions, comments from the board?
Yes.
Just to clarify, you're asking if we approve of this as the vision moving forward and joining in with the state in that?
Yeah, the resolution is essentially just a, it's a formal way of saying, yes, we, the school board, in terms of these general tenants, we think it's our collective duty to keep these ideals at the forefront when we're having conversations about public education. And we think that things like future-focused learning, accountability, and predictable funding are critical for us to best serve our students here in Menaca 201.
So I have a couple of questions. What happens if we don't pass the resolution?
There's no impact if we don't pass it. The impact is kind of looking at that collective. I think in Vision 2020, about 90% of school districts statewide did pass it. And then what that allowed those who advocate on the behalf of school districts to say is that the majority, the vast majority of school districts across the state see these as important things. So please, listen to us about funding for public schools. Please hear our voice when it comes to all of the mandates that keep getting pushed upon us at the local level. So there's no immediate implication. It is simply a way that the collective whole would come together and say, yes, we as a school board, I mean, I would anticipate that the number of school boards statewide, it will be very high, probably something similar to the past. It doesn't obligate us to support anything in the future, but it's essentially saying like, these things are important to us as a school district. But implication if we don't, there's no immediate or real implication of that. Ultimately, I have to continue to be connected to this work at the local and state level through these organizations because it will have real impacts for us. So with or without the resolution, I'm charged with that.
Okay. So, you know, you explained the why. When I was reading about it and, you know, thinking about this resolution, what, what is, what's the purpose? I mean, we have all of those things that we need to be focused on. I get that, and I support that. The thing that is maybe not so much concerning, but I just need more because, I mean, we've talked, and I did contact the, I did contact the ISAB, and I asked them for clarification. I said, you know, like you'd mentioned, what's coming up for, you know, legislation as far as, is there anything in committee? Is there anything current? Is there anything upcoming? You know, give me something specific. And they're like, we're sorry. We don't have anything. We don't really know. It's just kind of, you know, out there in the ether. That wasn't, that really didn't gel with me. And I, and I started thinking, I'm like, well, why, why do they want this? And if you go in the, the current journal, the January, February, 2025, right in the article, just like you said, a decade ago, they did Vision 2020 with over 90% of school boards passing a similar resolution. And then they say, this is the key point, what's critical to our ability to generate legislative support for our successful effort to pass the evidence-based funding formula. So I feel like they're, in a sense, using our support to pass legislation that they want to pass. And, you know, we talk about mandates. I know a lot of people, automatically, your mind probably goes to, oh, COVID mandates. They made us do all this stuff that we didn't really want to do. Or, you know, it could be other things, whether positive or negative, pro or con, whatever it might be. But I just, I don't know how I feel about it, so.
I understand your perspective and where you're coming from. There, every year, with every new General Assembly, there are hundreds, I'm pushing thousands of bills that are proposed or that come forward that have implications on local school districts. So we have to be involved in that conversation. And then that, that aspect of evidence-based funding, that has to continue to be a priority statewide, and we are our best advocates. If we, if that's not fully funded, or we lose the mandated categoricals, that will have significant impact. And you know who bears the burden? Low, our local tax base. And then if there are other changes related to federal funding, which we don't yet know, we are even more dependent on those state funding sources. And so the way that the Illinois funding model is built, we have to continue to say, hey, you must, you need to fully fund us, and otherwise, how do we provide the services that our communities expect? Because the, right now, the significant burden is on our local tax dollars. So that is a really critical aspect of advocacy and saying, hey, we need predictable funding. We can't wonder every year if the state is gonna pay their bills to us. We need to know that that check's gonna come in the mail. And I think this past year showed that there was more reliable, you know, on-time payment with mandated categoricals, and that the EBF has significantly helped us as a district. But we don't know what the future is like. So it, it is important. And then I understand with that unknown about any other mandates, again, this does not signify that we are in support or not of any upcoming or future mandate.
That's probably my concern.
Who, who knows, but who knows what's gonna come out? I mean, I've heard lots of things that have, you know, gotten, you know, pushed down before, they all pop back up. They like kind of always get like the second, third, and fourth life, and they all come back up. And then there's gonna be new ones. We just, we don't know. But that's how the process works with our elected officials, listening to their local constituents or having interests, and then proposing legislation that is gonna impact us. So we're, what, I think what we're trying to say here is like, hey, like, let us breathe. Let, let us not have to be just constantly be bombarded about all of these new unfunded mandates that are passed to school districts, and then leave us wondering how we're gonna pay for them. And so it is a very difficult game because nobody knows what that, you know, potential future mandates are going to be. But that's how it happens on a just continual basis.
So if I could leap from what you were talking about is, to me, this is one of those areas where going through the process kind of becomes the process, in a sense, because the IASB is really our best and almost only way to really advocate for the district at the state level. We, we can obviously write our senators and attend meetings and do our individual stuff, but the IASB is the only organization that incorporates all the school districts. So it doesn't mean that I agree with everything they do, or that any of us agree with anything, everything that they do. But I, my personal belief is we have to stay engaged with IASB in order to make our voice heard. So the resolutions, the, for the delegate assembly at the conference, is when they put forward the resolutions, they are putting their money behind, in a sense. And those are times we can, we can discuss. There haven't been many lately since, since the pandemic. There haven't been a lot of resolutions. They've put their money behind. This is, to me, being informed, and then we can go from there when things come up that we're discussing individually. So that's how I look at it, is just kind of a big thumbs up to the organizations that are working on our behalf. And we can go from there as, do we agree with this, or we don't agree with this thing they're doing, and, and kind of put our, our foot down or our hand up. But I just look at it as, this is the information, and IASB is an organization that we do, as a district normally support. So I, I would love to hear anyone else's ideas, but I, I hear what you're saying, and I just want to be really clear that we, we don't have to support everything they do to give them kind of a pat on the back, that there are the people working on our behalf. You know, when we go to the conference, we're hearing from them. And that's an opportunity for them to hear from us as well. So that's kind of my nutshell.
Just to like simplify it, clarify again, this would just be a formal communication saying, things that you've outlined here are what we'd like you to continue working for, for us at the local level. Okay? Thank you.
I move to pass the Vision 2030 Resolution.
So we have a motion to approve Vision 23 Resolution as presented. Was there any other conversation? I don't want to cut anybody short. Was there any other conversation? We, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Let's do a roll call for this.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Epstein.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're moving on to discussion and information items 5.01 NWEA Winter MAP.
Okay, Mrs. McCarr, our chief academic officer is gonna come up and give us a snapshot of NWEA Winter MAP progress.
All right, so students took winter NWEA MAP in December, so I'm just gonna kind of quickly go over the results and our next steps from those results. Just a reminder that a lot of this conversation deals with our strategic plan goal number one, where we demonstrate continuous improvement in student growth and achievement. And then if you look at our portrait of a graduate, it kind of encompasses a lot of those things. But in order for our students to be academically prepared, we do want to look at our student growth and the achievement. But we also want to make sure that they come out being critical thinkers, effective collaborators and communicators. Those effective communicator collaborator skills, being able to talk and listen and read and write, all play a huge role in working together and developing better critical thinking skills and being more academically prepared, too. And then being responsible, resilient, being a self-advocate, making goals for themselves, and working hard to achieve those things. So if we take a look at our benchmarks that we used at the beginning of the year, just to kind of take a pulse on this, for the early literacy benchmark for first-grade students, demonstrate readiness skills, in the fall, we had about 75%. In this last round of Winter MAP, we had 69%. So there was a little bit of a, a drop. Overall, our students are in the 59th percentile. If you remember with our MAP norms, 50% is kind of where they're looking. So overall, we were in the 59th percentile. I did go back and look back a couple of years because I was, I was a little curious with, with the data points there. We do tend to see a, a, kind of stay stagnant or a little drop in those in the last couple of years. So I wasn't necessarily really worried about that. We started at the 76th percentile two years ago, and the 80th percentile before that. And I think it just depends a lot on the group of kids. It's not, we can't, it's hard to compare year to year because there are different entire set of students. But I just wanted to point that out for you guys. Students will read on grade level by the end of third grade. We had a little bit of a increase there from 59% to 62. Traditionally, if I looked historically, we do tend to kind of stay the same or maybe rise by a point. So I do think it's a success that we grew by three. But again, different set of students, so different data points. And then eighth grade, students will meet or exceed high school readiness scores in reading. We went from 59% to 67%. When I do look at years past, I would say they stay kind of between going up a point to four percentage points. So for the fact that we grew by eight percentage points, that was pretty good. Again, still looking at different groups of students though there. So if I look at the reading cohorts, you guys are pretty familiar with this. The norms are on the right side there. And then you see the data from 2021 to 2024. I do traditionally see the data going in, in the right direction. The red numbers mean they were below the norms. The blue numbers mean they were above the norms, and the black numbers mean they were pretty much on par with what the norm was.
Could I stop you real, real quick? What is the, could you remind us, what is, where does the norm come from? What is that? And how does that relate to the data parents get in their emails, the, the results, those norms, those, those numbers?
Yes, essentially. So the norms are globally, like national normed data. So they look as a, the last norms came in 2020, and we do have new norms coming out this summer from MAP. But it looks collectively as first graders in general, right? And so what is the norm data? Like, what's the average student's data for first grade, second grade during each of these terms? During fall and winter and spring and all of those things. So you're kind of being compared globally with kind of your average first grader, average second grader.
Okay, so just to clarify, so that norm number, would that be the number that is the, that norm bar on, like the MAP results parents and families get, it has student, district, and then norm?
Correct.
That would be that number?
Yes, yes. So I wanna, I, let's see, hang on, I'm gonna unhide it. I made a couple other slides that I thought maybe might be a little bit more helpful. I made a couple of other slides that I thought maybe might be a little bit more helpful. So let me do that for you real quick. I just think it might be, it just gives a little more concrete numbers. So if I go back here, taking those norm datas and turning them into percentage points. So the norms are always 50%. That's how they, that's, that's how they're created. So if you look at our data, I took those norms and they, they have a big old chart that you can look and figure out where they are. So percentage wise, you can see, so our, our first grade on average scored in the 54th percentile this winter test. What I do like too is to look at the color bands, the cohorts going down. So you can see, number one, you can see just about every year, we kind of have a dip in our third grade data. But a reminder that that's, we go from the K2 test to the 25 test, where the test is not read to them anymore. So we do tend to see a dip in that, but we, you can also see the kids starting to bounce back from that too. So if you follow the colors, you can see where, you know, they stay fairly consistent within a few percentage points of those cohort percentiles. Questions? Okay. And then to look at the, the growth from fall to winter, this is, for the most part, pretty typical of what we've seen over the years. We do see a little bit of improvement here if we look at our reading scores, a little bit of improvement from the fifth grade data, the sixth grade data, and seventh grade. And there was a little, a small decline in the second grade data from the previous years. But what I want you to look at is, the blue is the observed growth of our students and that triangle, or the diamond is the, those grade level norms, like how many points they were projected to grow by. And you can see that as we go out through the years, more and more of our students are exceeding those growth goals. You know, that third grade dip, we see that, but we're getting closer. Our teachers are doing amazing things. If we switch gears and look at our numeracy or math data, first grade students demonstrating readiness skills in math, 78th to 75th percentile, fairly accurate in terms of what their reading data suggested also. But when I look back a couple, two years' worth of data, we do tend to see either kind of staying right on par or maybe a percentage point or two dip in that data. So it is consistent with what we've seen in the, the past. The end of fifth grade, performing at or above grade level, we went from 69% to 71%, which is pretty indicative of our previous year's data as well. And then if I look at eighth grade math data, in the fall, we were in the 68% of our students were meeting or exceeding high school readiness scores in math. And then in the winter, that jumped up to 72, fairly consistent with what we've seen in the years past. I've seen anywhere between staying stagnant to three percentage points there. So that we grew four was good. But again, you're comparing different kids' data yearly with that. And then our math cohort, RIT scores there. Your norms are on the right like before. You can follow the cohorts through the years. What I do like to note really about this one is we see a lot less red as we're going through the years. So we've got a couple additional years of, of our math curriculum here, where, you know, we see the data kind of showing that the, the curriculum is great, what our teachers are doing in their classroom, we're seeing lots of good results there. All of our data really is trending, trending in the right direction there in terms of our math. And then if you look at the percentiles, again, the norm is 50%. So if you look, all of our data pieces are at least in the 50% or higher. But you can see, you know, our second graders are just knocking it out of the park there with 64, our kindergarten 66%. But overall, our data looks, looks pretty good. If we look at the RIT growth, again, we don't want to just look at achievement, we want to look at our growth too. Pretty proud to say, I'm proud of our district administrators, our building administrators, our teachers, our MTSS program, everybody. If you take a look, everybody met or exceeded the projected growth across the board here. So again, the blue is the observed growth that our kids and our students had. The diamond is where they were projected. And you can see we've got a couple of grade levels that just knocked it out of the park. Everybody exceeded the growth there. So what do we do with this data? Well, we're going to continue these things. These were some of the next steps we talked about last time too. Targeted math reading and writing schools, skills, and then utilize a drill down on MAP. So if I go a couple of slides ahead, MAP allows you to really drill down on the data. You're not just looking at a math number, and you're not just looking at a reading number, but you can break it down into these specific skills. And our teachers and our coaches are amazing at looking at this data and breaking it down. We can have small group instruction. We can kind of cater and tailor some of our instructional needs on a specific level for our students within each of these things. And you can see the reading skills, depending on what grade level, the, I guess, the topics of those targeted areas change a little bit vocab wise. But it's just a great way, and our buildings are continuing to do this, our teachers are doing this, drilling down on the data to see how we can meet the needs and not just achieve kids, but grow in all of these areas. We're going to evaluate our progress using the ISBE State Literacy Plan. We've done a lot of work internally with our staff, but we're also looking for parent feedback on that too, because those are stakeholders that have an important voice in the matter too, which is what we're currently working on with our state literacy kind of review. But it's, your ORACY skills are listening and speaking and reading and writing all combined together. We're also, we also focus on Scarborough's reading rope. So you've probably seen this, but it's just not like, just read and figure things out. There are so many things that go into reading comprehension, having a lot of background knowledge and building that background knowledge for our kids. Having access and learning new vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, literacy knowledge, all play a role in reading, and it's a language comprehension. And then on top of that, we have word recognition skills, phonological awareness, decoding and sight recognition or heart words. All of those play a role together and weaved carefully through curriculum and through the instructional practices of our staff so that our kids have a strong reading rope. So we're continuing to work on that as well. Professional development offerings and then curriculum meetings and PLCs. Also, our instructional coaching support is doing amazing with that. So again, our, our coaches can help the teachers and the PLCs really drill down on that data. There's a lot of research out there about small group instruction, and sometimes curricular resources don't always lend themselves. I think being an oldie like me, sometimes I'm used to being sage on the stage and you can teach to the whole and everybody gets it. But research is showing trying to do small group instruction is really where you're going to get your bang for your buck for your kids. And our instructional coaches have been doing wonderful things with our teachers, and the data that's coming from those groups is outstanding. Do you guys have any questions for me? Just a reminder that everything we do and everything I talked about really deals with all five of our strategic plan goals. We're working on student growth and achievement with the test scores, but we're also the learning environment because students need to feel safe, they need to feel like they belong, whether they're a visual learner, kinesthetic learner, auditory, all those things take a role into the learning environment. Our working environment, our admin are doing great having these PLCs and building leadership teams to have collective efficacy. Our coaches are doing their work to figure out what type of PD we need to offer our staff and they're being there for them. Community engagement through our different committees and our literacy plan, and then trying to stay transparent, effective, and efficient with the finances because all these things cost money. So we need to be pretty responsible when we're, we're making these decisions. If you guys don't have any questions, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you so much. Always very organized. We'll continue with discussion information items, 5.02, 2025-2026 Academic School Calendar.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. What we have for you here is first glance. We always bring you a look at what we're thinking, let you marinate on that a little bit, give us some feedback, and then we'll bring this back to you next month with any suggestions, changes that develop from this conversation. But what we have is next year's proposed calendar. As you guys know, what we try to do is sync our calendar up as much as we can for the community with what the high school does. They just approved theirs on, I think, the 16th of this month. If I'm not mistaken, it was just recently that they approved it. So we gobbled that thing up, compared it to what, we had a little bit of a blueprint laid out for us, compared it to that. And what I bring to you this evening is the product of work from our calendar committee. That's a collection of folks from each of the buildings. They come in, so we get a representation from the campus all the way down to the primary center, folks that have feedback and, and input from all of those perspectives. So I'll give you kind of a, a short rundown of the, the high points here. With this proposed calendar, we would have the same start date for students and staff as the high school. That would be that August 11th and 12th in the blue there. And then one thing that we are proposing that is different than what the high school does is to have a in-service day in first semester. With the way that the high school has theirs laid out, there would have been, if we followed it, you know, line step, there would have been no in-service days. Those first two days are considered in-service days, but true professional development, you know, a day dedicated to that, there wouldn't have been one for first semester for us. And we felt like that was a missed opportunity. You know, at the committee, some folks brought up, if you have a first-year teacher, they wouldn't get any sort of professional development for that entire first semester, and we wouldn't have an in-service day potentially until January 5th when we return from Christmas break, winter break. And that is not providing maybe the level of support that we would like for every staff member, but certainly a new staff member that comes to us with limited experience as an educator. So Ms. McCarroll thought it was a great idea as well. We've got some ideas already geared up if we in fact have one for September. So we threw one of those in there towards the end of the month to make sure that we were providing some PD for our staff before winter break hit us. In October, we have adjusted our parent-teacher conferences. This year, we did it like the 23rd, 24th, where that falls on the calendar there. The feedback from the calendar committee was, we've got to have a little more time with our kids. So even rolling it back an extra week, they felt provided an opportunity to have some more face time with their kids before we were sitting down. It also provides a little bit more of a buffer from the end of the quarter, which is ending on the 10th there. We felt like that would, the consensus from the committee was this year, it was a little too rapid fire from when the quarter ended to when we had conferences, didn't really give them as much of a chance to, to get themselves organized to talk to parents about the end of the quarter. I see you gearing up for a...
I was just curious if those conference days have ever been considered to be those two days in November before the Thanksgiving break?
Yes, ma'am. We did, so we didn't do that forever. And then we shifted to that because the high school was doing that. Shanahan did it for a while. But we, I believe it was two years ago, took a little poll in the community, and folks have shifted away from that. The high school doesn't do parent-teacher conferences at all at this point. But the consensus in the community was that folks were shifting away from that approach. And honestly, our philosophy was, why are we waiting till the end of thanks, you know, the end of, of November to have sit downs with parents when we really want to get those conversations going a little bit sooner in the school year? So we've moved them, we've migrated them up. This, like I said, pushing it back to the 30th and the 31st, you'll notice the teachers were absolutely giddy about that. Some of the feedback they get from their colleagues is that Halloween, if their students, if their children participate in Halloween, everybody's always hustling to try to get home to do that trick or treating. This provided, they felt an opportunity for teachers to kind of slow roll into that also because that would be a shorter day for them. That's not the, the long, long day of parent-teacher conferences. But it would also provide families an opportunity to be able to participate in those evening activities if they choose to do so without the rush of getting off the school bus at four o'clock, you know, and, and trying to get ready to do those evening activities. So in addition to the timing for our school year, they also felt like they were listening to their colleagues and some of the concerns that they've expressed over the years about the, the hustle of those days. Rolling into November, that is exactly cookie cutter to what the high school's doing. And then December, the same thing. We would have an early dismissal on that 19th. And then our Christmas break, winter break, would be fully in alignment with what the high school is doing, with a return on the 5th as a teacher institute. And one thing that we took advantage of this year was that the high school also had a teacher institute on that day, and we did some vertical articulation with them. So I know Mrs. McCarroll is excited about the opportunity of reaching back out, establishing some of those relationships and setting up some vertical articulation with them for that common day that we have for teacher institute.
Yeah, but before you go too far, I wanted, I had written down to ask whether there was conversation about November the 25th. Is that currently a, is that a half day currently or an institute day? Or currently, that's a shorter day for students, right?
So this calendar year, we had what is an XSE, and I was going to talk about those in a moment, but that's an early dismissal day. That was for students, but staff worked the full day. We had some professional development planned, building-based that day. Attendance was not that great, if I'm being honest with you. So that was a point of consideration with the calendar committee was if we're going to, we're going to make that for the sake of this coming calendar based on the feedback that we've gotten and the data points that we had as a full day of attendance for students and for staff.
Clarify, you're, you're saying attendance for the, the teachers at the...
So we had...
In-service or attendance for students at school?
For the teachers at the in-service.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I understand. My question was actually going to relate to the, the students being whether or not that would be a day that may, a day that may end up being a low attendance day based on travel and the, the proximity to the, the holiday itself.
Great question, yeah. And we, we kicked that around even when we migrated from having parent-teacher conferences those two days and moved those close, you know, further up in, in November and now into October. With the local schools doing the same thing, the high school included, we felt like, will you still have some families that leave and go? Absolutely. But our attendance, we felt with us publishing a calendar that was in alignment with the high school, getting it out now, you know, the families could plan accordingly. But it wasn't a significant enough hit for us to...
Thank you.
Because then Monday becomes Tuesday, and you work your way back from that. So, but again, with us being in alignment with the high school, you know, we felt like that was, that was the most important thing for us to do was capture that for the families to have consistency. In January, like I said, everything is completely in alignment with the high school. February, the 27th teacher institute is also in alignment with the high school. So this provides us with two opportunities for vertical articulation in some capacity if that's appropriate and necessary. And then March, we have spring break lined up exactly with the high school as well. One thing to note is that Monday after Easter Sunday, we have as a non-attendance day. The high school has 180 days that their teachers work, and our teachers work 181 with the contract. So by us using that as a non-attendance day, and, which is in alignment with what high school does, that puts our end date as the 21st in May. The high school will end on the 20th. And the rationale again being that we work 181 days, the high school works 180 days. So it just kicks us back one more day, you know, to, to be able to give that day as a non-attendance day as well. One thing that we will be doing is hunkering down a little more with the high school and talking about those early release days. You know, we've been engaged in conversation, obviously, through the lens of the transportation department and, and some of those implications of us merging, changing routes, you know, as far as, you know, times, things like that, being able on an early out day, can the high school have an early out day and us have a normal release and not have an impact on getting kids home? You know, can we do it on the same day? You know, and have early outs on the same day so our community can experience, okay, Wednesdays are going to be, you know, and this, this Wednesday is going to be an early out for everybody in our community. We don't know yet if those timing components can work. So we're going to take the time between now and our next meeting and sit down with the high school a little bit, crunch some numbers, and see what we can do to organize ourselves so that we're, you know, best serving our community and also providing professional development throughout the calendar. our community and also providing professional development throughout the calendar year for our own staff and professional development. So that's what I pledge to you is between now and then, we'll get those ironed out and come to you with those in a more concrete form. Those would be our early dismissal days. You know, typically, we've had them on Fridays. There's been discussion maybe of moving them away from Fridays and onto Wednesdays. You know, so those are some of the things that we're going to iron out in the next month to bring to you guys.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I will say, I appreciate the committee always putting 201 first. I know the alignment with the high school is obviously intriguing and important, but as far as, for example, putting a day in September, I think it is, for the --
Yes, sir.
It's important to always have our best interests, not just the alignment. So I do appreciate the committee doing that as well.
Absolutely. Shout-out to them because that was the first thing that they said when they looked at this was, you know, that we've got to do something about that. So they definitely represented us.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. See you next month.
Okay, we'll move on to board topics. Does anybody have a board topic? I don't see any. We'll go straight to administrative reports.
Okay, the administrative reports from our building administrators and our department leaders are posted in board docs, and we'll just take a few moments to highlight a couple of those important points. And we'll start here to my right with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Stubb.
All right. Good evening, all. I just have a couple of things I would like to point out from my report as well as highlight one thing that was not in my report. You'll notice in my report, Ms. Martinez added some details about the multilingual programming and the access testing, which is required of all students that are multilingual and have not hit a proficiency level to state that they have tested out of the multilingual need for services. So she noted that we are starting access testing this month, and one of the highlights that we started this year was at our junior high. Our multilingual teacher and the junior high administration had a breakfast as a celebration to kick off the access testing and to allow the students time to ask any questions that they might have about what to expect during access testing. It was a lovely morning that we were able to sit down and talk to the students, so that was really exciting. When it comes to the testing, though, so the testing just started relatively recently, and Ms. Martinez just sent me an update about four hours ago that we have one school that is 94% completed on their testing. We have four other schools that will likely be finished by the end of this week, and then one school that we're getting up and running for the testing. So that testing window is open until March 4th, so our teams are doing a phenomenal jobs at the building, getting that testing completed so the kids can get back to their regular schedule. So very excited about that. The other highlight that I wanted to share is one of our teachers at Menucha Elementary School was nominated and was awarded a grant in the amount of $275, and that's Ms. Darnowski at Menucha Elementary School, so congratulations to her. Mr. Jerry forwarded this on to us. So she was awarded this grant from the Otter Cares Foundation, and it is an educational-minded non-for-profit that seeks to inspire our students to become entrepreneurs and philanthropists who help continue to build up their community. So I thought that was a really great opportunity and just wanted to give a shout-out to not only the organization but also Ms. Darnowski. So congratulations there. Any questions about my report? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Messy. Do you have any other updates?
So one thing we wanted to just talk about this evening was, we are starting the process of planning for next year already, which seems crazy but definitely necessary. So our principals and department leaders are performing evaluations on our current staff and have been doing so throughout the year. One thing that we start doing district-level then is engaging in conversations with our principals about the needs in their building, about what they're seeing, feedback from those evaluation observations. And then that is really what we use to guide our staffing recommendations that we bring to you guys in the spring here. What we are planning on doing, we met today, and by we, I mean Ms. Kinder, Dr. Stubb, myself, met with three of our buildings. We have meetings tomorrow as well as Wednesday and Thursday. That should provide us an opportunity to hit all of the buildings, and then we'll follow up with Mr. Sousa in the tech department, and Ms. Martinez, and some of our other leaders. And we'll then put together a -- this is our staffing recommendation. We include Money Mary in the conversation, obviously, looking at the budget for next year and seeing where all of these asks fit within our vision, you know, aligning with our portrait of a graduate, and all of the things that we value here at Menucha 201, also being reflective of our student population that may be changing, and just the needs as well of our students and our staff. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up that you'll be seeing us, hopefully, fingers crossed if everything goes well next month, with a preliminary staffing recommendation for next school year. And, you know, the principals are showing up to these meetings. They have done some data crunching and have really analyzed their buildings, and it's nice to just sit and engage with them in conversations about the needs of their buildings, the students, and to listen to them advocate for our kids and our staff, and really trying to push as much as we can to be better and do better. So just wanted to share that information with you and let you know that we'll be coming back to you next month with hopefully some preliminary staffing.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mrs. McCarroll, you're good? Okay, and Mr. Sousa? We have a few tech updates for you.
All right. So today will be the last time I'll come to you without any money requests. Next month is where we're up a little bit, but we'll get to that next month. So a lot of projects going on right now. I want to fill you in as fast as I can. And number one, first-grade Chromebooks. Our piloting's gone really well. We're now at our third building, and distinct, the whole project's been going really well, and I feel that we'll be coming to you soon in probably February for an actual action item for first-grade Chromebook adoption, which really helps out in a lot of different phases for teaching and learning and even the tech department and logistics. Sorry, I'm on the tail end of a cold, but anyways, one of the nice things is now that we're seeing that the Chromebooks are being used effectively, kids are liking it, teachers are liking it, it's making a difference. When students come into Menucha 201, in kindergarten, they'd be issued a Chromebook, and then when they go to first grade with this new model, if we approve all this, you get a Chromebook in first grade, you take that to fifth grade, you get a new one in fifth grade, you take that till you graduate. It just simplifies the entire, like, logistics and purchasing and procurement strategies. But none of that matters if it doesn't work in the classroom. So the past four months, we've been really going after to see how does this work in the classroom, providing training with our ed tech coach, teacher training on how to use Chromebooks effectively for these teachers and kids, and things are going really well. Next up, tariffs are potentially a problem for us. As I'm getting quotes right now from different vendors, Dell, Asus, Acer, whatever, a lot of the quotes are coming in with like, we'll stand behind this quote for 10 days because we don't know if a tariff is going to impact a country that this is made in. Obviously, most of this stuff is not made in America. So that is something the tech department's working on. We're taking a hard look at all of the different models that we've collected in right now for evaluation, and so we're obviously trying to rank them all for cost, performance, reliability, stability, repairability, but then also have like a backup plan if all of a sudden the cost shoots up, you know, on one model or another or manufacturer. So something we are aware of, and we're trying to navigate the waters, and another reason why we'll likely be bringing to you in February, you know, approvals go so then we can lock in prices and go for the upcoming school year. Back on the good news side, for E-rate projects, things are looking pretty good so far. The major projects here are going to be firewalls and then a lot of cabling at Jones. And so far, the costs are what I've been kind of projected within, and these projects everyone generally likes because they're eligible to 50% reimbursement, and so those are our favorite kind of projects. There is a chance that E-rate could go away. We don't know. We obviously hope that wouldn't, but these projects I would still recommend doing even if that dark day were to happen. That would impact every district in the U.S., so hopefully that nothing happens there. But so far, so good, and so we'll bring you more information and actual final proposals at the next meeting. And lastly, we've been looking at a communication system now for a couple of months. So if you can't remember, it's been a while. Back in the fall, we sent out a survey to all of our parents, and we go, tell us how we communicate home from the classroom, from the building, from the district, and beyond. And by all accounts, you could say we had a passing grade, but with some rooms for improvement. And trying to synthesize all the different responses back we got from parents. And generally, there was a good consensus of parents wanted something more streamlined so you have less like apps to go to to communicate to parent, to teachers and principals, something a little bit more consistent, hopefully something more personal about their students' performance coming home beyond just, I have an A- in algebra. And ultimately, this helps parents and teachers stay informed, be connected, and reduce kind of some of the overwhelming or redundant messages that can happen. So with that, we've assembled a small kind of round-one team of eight people, district office, tech, a couple principals, and some instructional coaches. And we've looked at five different vendors, and at the end of this week, we should have our top-two vendors figured out or solutions, and then we'll have a much larger audience for a round-two where then we can have a lot more stakeholders look at potential solutions for hopefully an adoption for a new communication platform for parents to use for the upcoming school year. So things are going well there. And before I get into the other thing, any questions about the four? Again, so Chromebooks going good, we're watching for tariffs, E-rate so far should be good, and we're on track with this communication project.
I don't have a question per se, but we couldn't go on without mentioning how clear your graphics are. We understand what is good and what is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, the other big thing, the other thing we've been dealing with. So as you saw on the news, you know, every power school district in America and beyond essentially has dealt with this power school breach. So what we've been doing in the tech department, though, we've been trying to do our level best of reaching out to every, obviously, current family and staff. That's easy to do, but we're talking graduated students from 2018 to let them know that this impacted you, it's bad, it's not super bad, and then now, and we've been, so that's been a big challenge to kind of actually identify email addresses and keep tally of who we can actually get ahold of and who we can't. I have a lot of stats behind it, but you probably don't care about that. We will eventually get down to a list of, here are families and former staff members that we may have to snail-mail, is our only option, and some that we don't have a snail-mail, last known address, we don't have an email address, so it is what it is. We've been working really hard on that. I do want to say a quick thank you to Pam and Dave on that because there's a lot of data crunching flying around, especially when I've gotten some thank-you emails from kids actually in college that never heard about this, and it's, it is kind of, you know, disappointing to hear like, how come my sis, how come this happened to me? I graduated four years ago. Well, Illinois State Law says we need to hang on to your records for 60 years. Like, so, yes, you left our district four years ago, but you're still part of this. And if you went to Menucha High School, then you're double-part of this. So anyways, we have been working really hard on that. The good news here on this is power school's going to be reaching out to all families and staff members involved with this, offering a two-year like credit monitoring service. But the real good news so far is there is no evidence yet of the data actually being sold or leaked out to other nefarious parties. It's been contained to just one nefarious party, so be that as it may. So I just want to let you know what we've been working on. We've been trying really hard to get the word out the best we can. We still have some other buckets of people to target. As you can tell, I kind of took a few days off here, struggling with health, but we'll get back on it tomorrow and get your rest.
So, and I'm sorry, I didn't send this in an email prior. We can move it forward if it's not for tonight, but you might want to answer as well. Is there been any talk or information about power school's liability in the sense of the work we're doing based off of what happened versus us use all of the work, all the extra work you're doing, all of the, all the extra things you're not doing? So I don't know that we have an answer tonight, but as far as what we would normally doing versus what happened on their end, where does that fall as far as what we might want to do or think about doing?
Yeah, well, I mean, the good news is, like, from my, like, for example, when I came home all upset when I heard about this, you know, my wife would say, what happened? She always kind of tries to calm me down, like, was this, was this an Aaron problem or a power school problem? Like, no, it's 100% a power school problem. I don't know to the effect of that, but I'm, we're doing this because we believe it's the right thing to do. There are a lot of districts out there that are saying, hey, power school screwed this up. I'm just going to let all the current staff I know, current staffing students, and everyone else, that's a power school problem. We've been just taking this upon ourselves to do our best effort to reach out to everybody. So I don't know if that's --
Thank you. No, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to put that into the world that this is something that we may talk about at another time.
Sadly, in the world we live in, these kind of data breaches are happening all the time with various programs. You don't even know, or you hear about something from six months ago. Like, to power school's credit, even though they deservedly, they deserve and well-received essentially black eyes on why this came to be, they have been pretty decent on, here's what happened, letting us know like what happened, how it happened, and then here are the steps we're going to do about it. To their credit, you know, on the response side, it's been better than some of the other even like health organizations and other kind of bigger players with even scarier data than what we had. So that is kind of what it is on that. With that, I'll take, sorry, I tried to go as fast as I can with all my points, but any other questions?
I have a question about the power school breach. Did they, and forgive me if this is already out there, because I don't think it affected us, or I would probably know the answer to this question. Did they put like a 1-800 number out there or call us?
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little? I can't really hear you very well. I want to make sure everybody can hear you.
Is that better? Okay. Um, is there a, like, 1-800 number or a website, something that we can put out to the community for those that we're having maybe a hard time getting in touch with and saying?
Yeah, so on our website, we do have a news post article about the breach, and then we've been updating whenever they have new communication on our website with like their latest and greatest. So it started off with just what happened, but now it's, there's a next step. They're going to be reaching out with the, they're going to be contracting through Experian for credit monitoring, so they're going to be sending home, I guess, letter or emails to everyone about, here's how you can sign up for Experian credit monitoring if you want to for two years. When we actually get something from them, some like that, then we can also publicize that. There has been a little bit of a hurry-up-and-wait with them because, well, what do I want to send out? I feel like I want to send out another update to our parents, but I'm still kind of waiting on power school to give an official update. There's been a lot of, okay, we are going to do this, but in a couple of weeks. So then what do I, I've been stuck personally on what do I tell the parents because it's not official and ready and rocking yet. So that's where we're kind of in-between. I imagine we'll probably send out another, an update communication in-between their credit monitoring launch, but we're not there just yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sousa, for staying on top of that and definitely going above and beyond those unfortunate risks with any data in today's world. That's a reality. However, the team and Mr. Sousa are definitely going above and beyond to ensure that our families are made aware. So thank you for that. I do want to acknowledge that the school improvement plan updates have been shared with the board on, in board docs, and thank you to our building administration and our school improvement teams for their efforts on that. This is definitely a continued effort and theme that you'll notice through the updates is that there's a team associated with all of the work that we're doing for continuing to improve and looking at things and saying, okay, where are we doing well? How can we continue to grow in those areas? So our school improvement teams, our committees, our leadership teams are putting in a lot of extra work and effort that you don't, you don't necessarily see. So for example, the map data was shared, and we know that our teachers are using that data on an instructional level. Well, they're part of a team, a professional learning community. Many of our teachers and educators are also part of curriculum committees and other teams, our instructional coaches that are also using this data so that we can say not only what's the immediate impact on our kids, but how are we stronger as a system programmatically with our curriculum? So there's a lot of continued efforts in those areas, and I appreciate the responsiveness of these teams to the voice that they are receiving. So we did -- So, um, we did receive some voice from parents regarding communication, so as you can see, there's a team working on, hey, saying how we can improve that. We heard from parents, um, related to curricular and learning. I'd, I'd like more transparency with what are the learning outcomes for my student in a certain grade and a certain grade level area. Well, for the past several months, we've had teams of teachers working on developing public-facing curriculum maps, um, so thanks to Mrs. McCarroll and all of those individuals who, um, are now making those resources and growing those for our parents, um, to be available and access those online so that we can have a greater dialogue about student learning. Um, on the topic of voice, we are continuing to say, okay, not just anecdotally and by those who are representing in the committees, but how are we taking student voice, staff voice, and, um, family voice to ensure that we really do have a pulse on how we're doing and how we can continue to improve? So we are having conversations and looking at tools that would help us build a regular and integrated, um, way to collect voice from those stakeholder groups, students, staff, and families. And I'd be remiss to say, if I'm not super encouraged and inspired by our students who are already a part of, um, advisories, student advisories, um, and parents who are already a part of committees and advisories, um, they're giving us, they continually keep us balanced with perspective, um, and definitely encourage and support our growth. Um, on the topic of growth, we are continuing our efforts to review our professional services. Um, we've made some adjustments with nutritional services and working with Mrs. Robinson, our, um, our chief school business officer, and we are looking at our architectural services and our, um, we had a request for qualifications put out where we're reviewing, um, the, the firm that can best provide, um, services as, to us as a district, so that we have a comprehensive, um, facility and master plan in place to ensure that we're taking care of our facilities and our, our future focused on how we best fund that and looking forward. Um, we also continue our collaboration with Menucha, um, High School District One-Eleven regarding operational, um, and service efficiencies and also how we can work, um, stronger and more collaboratively together in the area of transportation services, which I know we have a, um, topic, um, a little later on the agenda about that. And we continue to work with our associations, um, that represent our drivers and our aides and our, um, mechanics, and so this is a, a continuing, ongoing effort to ensure that we, um, take care of our people, take care of our resources, and best, provide the best service to safely transport our kids to and from school. So this has definitely been a, a months-long, um, effort that will continue for months to come, um, but that is in the interest of growth and opportunity and providing the best possible service. Um, so that is it, um, in terms of, um, administrative updates, but I'm open to any questions.
I don't see any questions. I would like to echo your sentiments about the school SIP reports, the school improvement plans. I know the building committees do a lot of work and they're very informative, so anybody interested, I would highly recommend they read through those. Um, any, any board members have any other questions or comments for Superintendent Kinder? Okay, then we will be moving, we do have executive session tonight, so I will need a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of labor negotiation and possible litigation, and we may have action after the session.
So move.
I'll second.
Can we do a roll call?
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Chamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're back in open session. With that being said, we are looking for a motion to approve the transportation memorandum agreement as presented.
So move. Second.
Oh, who was it? Stevens.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Chamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'm, I'm sorry, um, Superintendent Kinder, did you wanna say something about that?
Um, yes, I just wanted to just make a general comment, um, regarding the memorandum of agreement that was, um, just approved by the Board of Education, and thank you for your support. Um, this agreement, um, is a one-piece in the collaborative effort with the high school district with Menucha One-Eleven, um, and in agreement with our associations with Menucha Elementary Transportation and Menucha Transportation Association, um, that allows us to, um, create a bridge of working together collaboratively, collaboratively as one unified unit. Um, and this, um, outlines, um, the terms of the memorandum of agreement, essentially keeping our status quo operations for the year, um, also acknowledging, um, the pay and compensation increase for our drivers and aides, um, that has been put on hold as the associations, the organizing of them and the negotiations has been going on. It also creates, um, a pathway to ensure we have, um, continuity of employment for our drivers and aides in our effort to work together, um, to effectively and efficiently use our resources to serve our community. So this is just one component in working collaboratively together. We will continue that effort, um, in collaboration with the, the associations and with One-Eleven to work toward a joint agreement with our unified, um, transportation services, and we will have an update for you in the upcoming month, um, as we continue to move that forward and, um, look to continue to prove our service and operations to our students and family, families, and also, um, acknowledge and recognize that we have strong system for our employees to be taken care of, um, in the side of the system they work. We truly value our dedicated drivers, aides, monitors, mechanics, and office staff, and we will continue, um, to work collaboratively, um, to do the best that we can for our kids and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Now do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll mo, I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Thank you.